I now call the Eastline Zoning Commission regular meeting of September 3rd, 2020 to order. It is 7:31 PM. I'll remind everybody, this is, this meeting is being held via video conference on Zoom. I'm going to start by doing a quick roll call, so I know which commission members are present. Also, I think it would be wise to identify any interested parties that are present. So, I've got a list here of folks here. I think I should know everybody without having to look at a list. Terry Donovan, signify by saying aye. I think we can all see Terry. Terry is here. Bill Dwyer. Bill is here. Kim Kaye, is Kim Kaye here? Is she not here? She's not here, okay.
She's not.
Norm Peck. I see Norm. Norm is here. And Anne Thurlow. Is Anne here?
Yes.
Anne is here. This she is, okay. I'm sorry. So, we have five commission members present, and we don't need to seat an alternate just yet. Let's move ahead here. We've got staff. Bill Mulholland is here. We know. Jen, you're here. Brooke Stevens is here. I see Brooke. Is Roseanne Hardy here, our ex officio?
No.
Nope, that's okay. All right. Very good. So, at this point, I think we will, it makes sense to seat an alternate, since we don't have a full commission. There are five of us, and so, it looks like Denise is the only alternate that's here, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
That is correct.
All right. So Denise, you are part of the regular commission at this point, as we go forward for tonight's meeting. I just want to remind everybody, just a few of the ground rules with the Zoom meeting. Just remember that while unmuted, we can hear you and everything going on around you. We can also see you. Board members and staff will remain unmuted during the entire meeting. As required by executive order, everyone must state their name and where they are from prior to speaking. For example, Terry Donovan, board member. If you're a citizen, for example, Harry White. I'm just making that name up. 123 Main Street, each time they speak. During public delegations, Jennifer will open the lines for comment. Please wait to be called on to speak. Once you have finished speaking, please mute your microphone or phone. During each agenda item, only the board, staff, and presenters will be unmuted to speak on that particular item. Only one person may speak at a time. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and wait to be called upon. Board members will be called upon to provide comment via a roll call. Members and alternates, for all motions, in the interest of making sure we have a clear record, please plan on roll call votes, so the public and Brooke, taking minutes, can be very clear on the record. I don't think we did that last time. That makes sense. Only hosts are permitted to share screens at this time. Any documents to be shared must come through Jen. As required by executive order, all documents being discussed and reviewed at the meeting must be posted on the town website, no later than 24 hours prior to the meeting. And again, this entire meeting is automatically recorded by Zoom, and upon the host logging out, the meeting will cease, and so will the recording. Let me turn my phone off. The meeting cannot continue without the hosts. Any questions, comments about ground rules? I think we've done this once before. I do like the idea of doing a roll call when we vote, so we're very clear on the record with that. That's a good change or modification to what we did last time. With that said, I'll move right on to public delegations, which is time set aside for any members of the public to address the commission regarding items, topics, subjects that do not appear on this evening's agenda. Is there anybody present here this evening from the public that wishes to address the commission regarding any items, topics, subjects not appearing on tonight's agenda?
So, the only other people besides commission members and staff and myself are Keith Nielsen, who is here for an application.
That's right.
Carol York, who is here for an application. And Jason Sazaglia, who I believe is also here for an application.
Okay. Fantastic.
I believe that we are all set.
We're all set. So, we can move right on to public hearing segment, and there is no public hearing segment, which we move right to the next item, which is our regular meeting. And we do have four items as part of the regular meeting. Item number one is the request of Carol York, owner, for a waiver of Section 20.8 of the Eastline Zoning Regulations, ownership requirement for access to a proposed subdivision lot at 92 Old Black Point Road. I'll note, we have a memo from the zoning official, and following our secretary reading the note from the zoning official, we will, we will hear from the applicant who's available to present, as is Mr. Mulholland, who can kind of fill in the blanks, you know, from a, from a staff standpoint. Okay? So, why don't we start with Alan's letter? Terry?
All right.
You should be mentioning 20.7. 20.7.
Is it 20.7 and not 20.8?
And 20.7.
No, it's, it's 20.8. We copied it right out of the regulation.
Minimum frontage is 20.7.
Yep. Yeah, my chairman notes say 20.8. That's what I'm looking at here, so.
The memo says 20.8.
No, but I'm telling you, 20.7 is minimum frontage, and you want minimum frontage on the road.
No, that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for a waiver of a back lot.
Let's, 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 let's.
That's what I'm talking about, back lot.
Let's read Mr. Mulholland's memo into the record, and then let's hear specifically from the applicant, who might be able to address that question, and then we'll have time as commission members to ask any questions that, or pose any concerns that we might have. Thank you, Bill, though. I appreciate you being so proactive. Go ahead, Terry.
Terrence P. Donovan, Secretary of Zoning Commission. Memo dated September 3rd, 2020 to Matt Walker, Chairman, Eastline Zoning Commission, from William Mulholland, regarding proposed waiver of ownership of right-of-way, 92 Old Black Point Road. The applicant, Carol York, is requesting that the commission grant a waiver of the ownership of the right-of-way for a rear lot on the property identified in the application as 92 Old Black Point Road. The applicant is proposing a one-lot subdivision to create a back lot to the rear of 92 Old Black Point Road. A 25, 25-foot, in parentheses, foot-wide accessway is required for a back lot. Section 20.8 of the zoning regulations provides criteria for such lots. It states, "Back lots, notwithstanding the minimum frontage requirements for each district, back lots are permitted in any zone. Lots created after August 9th, 2002 shall have a minimum of 25-foot frontage on an accepted or approved street," sorry for the train, "and be accessible by a 25-foot-wide, permanent, unobstructed accessway of the same ownership. The ownership requirement may be waived by the zoning commission by a two-thirds vote of all members upon demonstration by the applicant that the physical features of the property preclude strict compliance with requirement, and that the granting of the waiver will not have a significant adverse impact upon adjacent property, the environment, or the public health and safety. The following additional requirements shall be met for the creation of back lots. A) The minimum lot width at the building line shall be equal to the frontage requirement specified for the district. B) The area of the accessway shall not be included in the minimum required area of the lot. C) The maximum length of the accessway measured from the street line to the front building line of the back lot shall not exceed 1,000 feet. D) No back lots shall be created on the following streets, parentheses, Route 1, Route 156, and Route 161, close parentheses, less access and is combined, excuse me, with the driveway serving a lot which fronts on the street. And E) Lots created using a cluster slash open space design which have less than the required average frontage shall not be considered back lots, as long as the average frontage requirement for the entire subdivision is met. The granting of the waiver would allow the use of a, quote, "right-of-way," end quote, which eliminates the creation of another property line. The elimination of the line resolves potential setback issues from an existing home and allows proposed subdivision to move forward." That is it.
Is that the end?
That is it, Mr. Chairman. Yep.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Terry. Great job. I will note, the applicant is here and available to present. Carol, do you wish to make a presentation?
Um, yeah, I can say a little bit. Bill had said that he was going to speak first, so I didn't really prepare too much other than knowing that he understood it.
Would you rather, Bill, would you rather Bill speak first, so then you can chime in?
If he, if he would like to, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Otherwise, I can say a little bit, too.
That's fine. We can, you can go back and forth. We'll start with Mr. Mulholland on this. Bill?
Thanks.
In this proposal, I consider this, if you can hear me, essentially a housekeeping issue. If we grant this, they can move forward with the proposed subdivision. They still need to get that approved by planning, and as you can see from the drawing that Jen has up, it's rather.
He's coming in very low.
So, I have nothing further.
Okay. You were saying, I missed the last part of what you said, Bill. You said you can see from the drawing that Jen has available to all of us, what? What was the last part of your sentence?
It's a rather routine housekeeping type of proposal.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Carol, would you like to add anything to that, to what Mr. Mulholland said?
Yeah, that really is it, too. I mean, I meet all the other requirements, and I've got the existing 50-foot right-of-way and prepared to do a second 25-foot right-of-way. So, it, it does meet everything, everything that you asked for.
And this is the site plan that we're looking at right here, correct?
Right. So, what I'm proposing is that parcel B in the back is an acre.
Right.
And there is an existing 50-foot right-of-way that's always served, served that. We haven't used it, but it's on record. But I was going to do an additional 25-foot right-of-way on that front parcel.
Okay. Makes sense. Makes sense. Very good. Comments from any of the commission members before we take a motion? Does anybody have anything?
I believe Mr. Dwyer has his hand up.
Bill? Mr. Dwyer?
The right-of-ways on the property line.
Uh, maybe Bill or Carol, can you clarify where the right-of-ways are in relation to the, the site plan that we're looking at here?
Yes, I'm looking at the site plan.
Right.
Yeah, so the 25-foot right-of-way would be on parcel A.
I'm looking at it now. Yeah, I see it. Proposed 25-foot right-of-way, right.
Right. And there is the existing 50-foot right-of-way to the south of the property line.
Right. Okay.
It's not really existing. It's all, all brushed there.
The 50-foot right-of-way is existing. The 25-foot right-of-way is proposed, that's what I'm asking for the approval on.
I'm not going to argue about it.
Okay.
Mr. Mulholland?
Anybody else?
Yeah, Bill Mulholland has another comment.
Bill?
The 25-foot proposed right-of-way would be essentially dedicated to parcel B. In essence, the existing 50-foot right-of-way is really not part of this conversation. Well, it exists, and there are some complications with it in terms of what we're looking to do here. In order to move forward, we think it's cleaner to have the proposed 25-foot right-of-way. The ownership is waived, then parcel A continues to own it, but parcel B has legal access and meets the definition of back lot, as you, as read in, in my memo of Section 20.8.
Thanks, Bill. Any other commission members wish to comment on this application?
Terrence P. here. I mean, basically, like, I agree with Mr. Mulholland. It's just a housekeeping thing, you know? So, if it does get approved, that proposed 25-foot would probably serve as the driveway to that back lot, which is.
Right.
Obviously, like what Mr. Dwyer said now, if it's just, you know, brushed, then it'll look better with the driveway, so you see no issues whatsoever.
Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to comment? I think Anne was beginning to speak. Or no? Am I mistaken? Okay.
I think.
Thanks, Anne. I appreciate it. I don't see any issues either. If anybody else doesn't have any comments, I'll take a motion from somebody.
Terrence P., so moved.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
The property line and the driveway, they're synonymous. Is that true? You have the driveway and the property line. That's, that's the same area.
Go ahead, Bill. You wanted to.
Yes, it is. The frontage at 25 feet is frontage on the street.
And Andy, answer.
How about now? Do you hear me?
Start again, Bill. Start again.
The property line and the driveway, that's the same area. They're synonymous, right? That 25 on the street and the driveway, that it's same talking, same area.
Yes. Correct.
Okay. That's where I went.
That's where the driveway's going.
Right.
Very good. I'll take a motion if there's no further comment. I think we had one. Did we have one?
Mr. Chairman, Terrence P. did say so moved.
Second.
Thank you, Terry. And do we have a second? Seconded by, was it Denise or Anne?
Anne.
Denise, Denise? Anne?
Both of them seconded.
I'm not sure who spoke first. I guess Anne seconded it first. All those in favor, I guess I gotta take a roll call. We're going to signify by saying aye. I'll go around. Terry?
Aye.
Aye. Bill Dwyer?
Aye.
Aye? Bill, Dwyer?
Aye.
Get your name. Aye, okay. Norm?
Aye.
Aye. Anne Thurlow?
Aye.
Aye. And Denise?
Aye.
Aye. And myself, aye. So, the vote carries unanimously, 6-0-0. And congratulations, Carol.
Thank you, guys.
That was pretty simple. We wish every application was like that, but they're not, unfortunately.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your thoroughness and communicate with Bill to get this to where, to where we're at tonight. Moving on to item number two, which is the application of Keith B. Nielsen, PE Daco Incorporated Agent for Mr. Vincent Dowling, for Coastal Area Management Review for New Platform Stairs and Landing at 295 Old Black Point Road, Niantic, Connecticut. And we do have a memo from the zoning official to read. We also have an email from DEEP that we want to read. So, beginning with the, with Mr. Mulholland's memo, and then followed by the DEEP email. Terry, go right ahead.
Sure. Terrence P., zoning, dated September 3rd, 2020 to Eastline Zoning Commission from William Mulholland, regarding the coastal site plan application, 295 Old Black Point Road. Coastal site plan reviews are mandated under the Coastal Management Act, as found in Chapter 444 of the Connecticut General Statutes. This regulatory program is designed to protect the state's coastal resources from unsuitable development on lands within the coastal boundary. Local shoreline communities must review septic type, excuse me, specific types of development for compliance with the Act. In this application, Keith B. Nielsen, PE Daco Incorporated, Agent for Mr. Vincent Dowling, personal, excuse me, proposes to construct a steel pile and concrete pedestal platform with rails and low-voltage deck lighting. Construct a four-foot-wide platform access stairs with rails and an associated eight-foot-wide by 12-foot stair landing with rails on a stone revetment at the southern tip of Black Point, adjacent to Long Island Sound and landward of the high tide and Connecticut coastal jurisdiction lines. Mr. Nielsen is here this evening and will give a presentation.
And why don't we just, while you're, while you're, while you're going at it, let's just take the email from DEEP, too, and then we'll hear from, from Mr. Nielsen. Because I think a lot of us are going to be very interested in what DEEP has to say, and then, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Sure thing, Mr. Chairman. Terrence P. again. To Eastline Planning and Zoning Commission from Marcy Ballint, Senior Environment Analyst, Analyst. Subject: Referral on 295 Black Point Road, Eastline, dated August 31st, 2020. Dear Commission Members, thank you for referring the above-noted coastal site plan received electric, eh, electronically on August 31st, as requested. Our office has reviewed the proposal for consistency with the goals and policies from the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, CCMA, and offers the following comments: Focus on proper NFIP/FEMA construction for the proposed decks. The two-part proposed deck system is not attached to any structure, independently supported and landward of the coastal jurisdiction line. The lower deck is 10-foot by 20-foot within the VE14 zone, then connects via stairs leading up to an 8-foot by 12-foot deck outside of VE flood zone. Because they are attached, the entire deck system to be considered within the VE zone as loads will transfer to the upper deck. Please see the FEMA Technical Bulletin 5, page 18, has a section on decks, and it has the following link below that. The largest coastal management concerns centers, excuse me, concern centers on the deck system's capacity to remain in place during a storm event for this location, and ability to survive any erosion or scour. The lower deck notes an elevation of 17 and 1/2 feet, upper deck 22.2 feet. We assume this to be the top of the deck and not the lowest horizontal structure member, and should be confirmed with confirmation also that the lowest support of decks would be above BFE. We recommend engineering certification for this design, which we assume Daco Incorporated can provide, or has already provided, specifically, that both these decks and the stairs will remain in place during the 100-year storm event for this particular location. The lighting proposed on the decks should be floodproofed slash designed for a wet location. Also, since the deck is far away from the main structure, Daco should confirm the assumption that there is no possibility for deflection or transfer of loads to the main house. We hope these comments prove useful to the commission in their review of this coastal site plan, which is provided in accordance with Section 22A-105 through 109 of the CCMA, and do not necessarily reflect other zoning considerations which may apply. Sincerely, Marcy Ballint.
Thanks, Terry. Appreciate it. And now, we'll hear from Mr. Keith Nielsen, who will.
Mr. Mulholland does have his hand up.
Oh, oh, oh. Mr. Mulholland.
Can't hear you.
Uh, no.
Yes. Quit touching stuff.
Exactly. Um, I just want one comment. We typically look at the FEMA and the structural stuff at time of submission for a building permit, in which case I would look at it, possibly the town engineer and the building official. So, we're not there yet.
Not there yet.
But thank you.
Did you have more to add to that, Mr. Mulholland, or that was it?
No, I think it's appropriate to hear from Keith.
Okay. Let's hear from the applicant.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Can hear you fine. Just state your name and address for the record. We know who you are, but for the public, in case there's somebody out there.
Sure.
And for the record.
Keith Nielsen, Daco Incorporated, on behalf of Mr. Vincent Dowling at 295 Old Black Point Road. The, it's Mr. Dowling's desire to install this lower deck for his leisure and passive enjoyment of the view and proximity to Long Island Sound, and so, keeping in, in track with FEMA design standards and such, we put the deck in, in the southeast corner of the property, in accordance with the zoning setbacks, and in accordance with FEMA design standards, even though this is not a residential structure, we still kept the bottom structural elements, horizontal structural elements of the deck a foot above base flood elevation, as is shown in the detail in the lower left-hand corner of, of your drawing before you. And we've certified to the elevations and proximity of the deck to those standards. I would like to point out, I know that Ms. Ballint at the DEP made some comments and concerns about the ability of this structure to stay in place. I would just like to point out that we've had a couple of coastal storms already this year, and I got the opportunity to walk on Mr. Dowling's dock structure while the five-foot waves were breaking right into the face of the dock about three weeks ago. And that pier is held in place with five steel piles. We're looking, and that didn't even shudder when the waves were hitting it. We've got two piles that are going to be driven to a 15-foot embedment here, and those two piles are holding up a 10-by-20-foot deck, a considerably smaller structure, back further in the wavebreak zone, such that the forces on it will be absolutely minimal. So, let me go on to the site plan. We have prepared a coastal site plan application and a detailed narrative to go along with it, so that we have addressed the zoning application, the zoning aspects of the project, as well as the CAM aspects. And this project is being built on a, a rock and rubble revetment, sloped armor protection, which has no coastal resources, except the fact that it is a modified escarpment. And we are not changing the nature of the modified escarpment through this project. The other resources in the area are the rocky shorefront, the nearshore waters of Long Island Sound, coastal flood hazards, which we just discussed, and shellfish concentrations. Clearly, we are not in making any significant changes to any of those as a result of this design. The detail also at the lower left corner shows our one-foot clearance above the base flood elevation. In the application itself, we have addressed coastal resources, the uses of the property, the uses of adjacent properties, and the Vista issues, because it's important to note that in order to make sure that we were not creating an eyesore out here, we have the deck elevation four feet plus below the average lawn elevation, and so, this, this deck system will not be visible from any vantage except from the neighbors immediately east and west of the site. We've indicated in the application that, you know, these, with the exception of the auger posts for the upper landing, these are driven piles on the face, and excavated stone will be replaced immediately after the concrete pedestals on the, supporting the rear side of the deck are installed. We've gone through the coastal resources checklist in the application, and there are no adverse impacts, and we have made that summary. We would also point out that this is not a significant change to the nature of this modified escarpment. The escarpment has been armored ever since the Hurricane of '38, when most of the seawalls on Black Point were also built. The existing features of the shoreline, if you've seen it, this is a stressed, a highly-stressed shoreline. The average rock diameter on the shoreline is over a foot, and the average rock diameter on the bank is about three feet, three to four feet at any rate. With regard to the potential adverse impacts checklist, there are no applicable categories. There are no adverse impacts created by this project. We have also addressed the water dependency of the site and the fact that passive recreation is in fact a water-dependent use. There are no adverse impacts. There are no necessary mitigation standards, and as I summarize in the remaining impacts, Part 9 of the application, there is no threat to coastal resources created by this, so there is no disadvantage to the creation of this structure. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Keith. Here. Questions from the commission?
Mr. Nielsen, Terrence P. Donovan here. Just a question. Is this in addition to the existing dock that he has already, or is that coming out?
Nope. The existing dock is staying.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone on the commission wish to speak in regards to this application? Anyone on the commission wish to speak in regards to this application?
Denise. This might be a-
Please, go ahead.
This could be a stupid question, but we're talking about-
There are no, no, there are no stupid questions. Go ahead.
We're talking about 100 year storm events and in the last 20 years, we've had a whole lot of 100 year storm events. What, what's the feeling about like a 500 year storm event? How would this thing hold up?
Well, the, um, you know, when, um, when you talk about a 500 year storm and the water levels would be a couple of feet higher, um, but the, um, it depends entirely on the track of the storm. If you'll remember, in Hurricane Irene, Hurricane Irene had landfall in New York City and so we were hit and it was a slow moving storm, 10 knots. And so while we were under the influence of Hurricane Irene, it was downgraded to a tropical storm, but we were exposed to 40 to 50 knot winds for 18 hours. And the waves that were hitting this site were about five feet high. They were coming in a fetch directly from Orient Point on Sandy. Sandy came up the coast and turned left and we, and again was slowing down. It was downgraded from a tropical, from a hurricane to a tropical storm. We were exposed to 40 to 50 knot winds from the southeast for 22 hours. In Hurricane Gloria, Hurricane Gloria came right at, right at us and rode over us and we were exposed to 60 to 70 knot winds for an hour and a half. And in those cases, um, you know, the storm impacts were all different. A 500 year storm supposes a lot of things, but this, this pier, this deck with steel piles will be able to withstand any of those conditions.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Denise. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Mulholland?
Yep, Mulholland.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just want to know, I just want to know that the design standards for FEMA are to 100 year storm event, but we do consider 500 year our design standard is 100.
Mr. Mulholland, you're, you're gonna have to fix that computer or go on another one because you're in and out all the time.
We already tried that once, we'll have to do it again.
Yeah. I think the only question, and maybe it's above our pay grade, I don't know, is the question that, that DEP has in regard to, you know, the load support of the decks, the stairs and the ability of the structure to withstand, you know, a very significant storm, significant waves. Uh, Keith, you mentioned the pilings, if, if that's the right word, are gonna be embedded 15 feet deep. Maybe just talk a little bit about that. And I know that a lot of this stuff will probably be handled more at the staff level in terms of the engineering of this project and ensuring that it meets all the guidelines so that we don't have, uh, you know, this, this material breaking away in the Long Island Sound or ending up in somebody's yard. Maybe just speak a little bit to that, a little, little, little more, elaborate a little more on that for us if you would and-
Sure. Um, I wrote a letter back to Marcy Valentin today after receiving her comments yesterday. And so I'd like to just go right to the second paragraph. These steel piles which support the deck system driven 15 feet into the bearing strata. These piles are 12 inch diameter, three quarter inch wall thickness, um, galvanized, 50 KSI steel and will be, uh, would be considered an overdesign for, for this structure. The reason for using them is because wood is, we almost destroy a wood pile driving it through all the rock that is amassed at the toe of the slope.
Right. It gets damaged, it gets damaged, right?
Right. So the piles are actually designed for the pile driving, not for the support of the, of the pier. By the time they're in the ground 15 feet, um, they can hold 20 tons on each pile and they could withstand, um, forces of about 10 tons laterally without moving. The, but the, they're also going to be built into the slope with steel framing and the wood framing to hold up the decking and so on. So this is going to be a pretty strong, um, um-
Structure.
Yeah.
Right.
And I know that Ms. Valentin has said that, um, you know, the stairs are gonna transmit force up to the, the deck landing. The stairs are the weakest part of this whole thing.
Sure.
And, um, if, um, if we have, it would take probably a 10 ton tree in six to eight foot waves being thrown at this deck to get anything to break. And if it did, it would be bent steel and, um, and wood decking. And so we, you know, it would, it could be rebuilt, but those circumstances are pretty unlikely. And, um, and as I've said, the, the pier is held up by these same steel piles and it is a tough, tough, um, structure and this will be too.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith, for giving us a little bit of a greater description of, of, you know, the engineering aspect. Does any other commission members have any comments? Any pointed comments about this application?
The memo describes it well.
It does. And hopefully, Keith, you can understand, we want to be thorough with these because we, we found ourselves in a, in a little bit of, little bit of hot water, you know, with deep. We came out on the right end of that, you know, as I recall, but, you know, and, and you know as well as I do that, you know, that's not the path we want to get down, but it looks like everything, everything checks out here and I appreciate your, your thoroughness. Thank you, your description.
If, if I can just say one other thing, when I got Ms. Valentin's memo yesterday, I called up the DEP FEMA rep, Diane Ethkovic, and, um, and I asked her if she had concerns about this and she said, no, I don't.
Yes, absolutely.
It's, um, you know, it's clearly, it meets our standards and, um, you know, the things that I don't go into much in the application, that the, anytime we use steel on a project like this, all of the welds are continuous welds. So this 12 inch pipe holding up the, um, the framing steel and stuff is going to be welded to the entire, um, bottom of the steel framing and so on. These things are tremendously strong and, um, I don't think we're gonna see anything knock it down.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. With that, with that, I'll, I'll take a motion to approve or deny whichever direction. I think we know, we know what direction we're going in. Unless someone else has a comment, we'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Terrence P. here. I will move to approve the application of Keith B. Nielsen, PE, Daco Incorporated, agent for Mr. Vincent Dowling for a coastal area management review for new platform stairs and landing at 295 Old Blackpoint Road, Niantic, Connecticut, for the following reasons. Application is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the CAM Act. And two, applicant has taken all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water dependent uses.
Thank you for the motion, Terry. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
We have a second. Mr. Dwyer, Bill, thank you. All the, any final comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, we don't, we're not gonna do that. I gotta go around. Well, I'll start with my secretary, Mr. Donovan.
Yes, aye.
Are you in favor of this proposal? Aye, obviously. Uh, Mr. Peck, are you in favor of this proposal?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dwyer, how do you vote?
Yes, true.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Denise Markovitz.
Aye.
Your vote? Aye, excellent. And Anne Thurlow.
Aye.
You vote aye, so, as do I. So this is a unanimous 6-0-0 vote in, in favor of what the applicant has presented. Thank you, Keith, your always thoroughness and description of what you're gonna be doing and, and compliance with deep and everybody else. It's, uh, it's appreciated, it makes our job a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Have a great night.
You as well.
Moving on to item number three, which is the request of Theodore A. Harris, Esquire agent for 283 BPR LLC for a site plan modification for mixed use commercial space with apartments at 283 Boston Post Road, Patagonia Drive and 281 Boston Post Road, that's the parking, East Line, Connecticut. Uh, we do have a memo from Mr. Mulholland, our zoning official. Well, well, if we could read that now, Terry, that would be great.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Norm Peck, I need to recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Thank you, Norm. And do we have another?
You do. George McPherson is here if you would like to have him seated for this.
Yeah, we'll seat George for this. Thank you.
George, can you just unmute yourself so I, there we go. Perfect.
Thanks, George. Uh, so we have the, the memo.
Shall I proceed? Terrence P., dated September 3rd, 2020, to the East Line Zoning Commission from William Mulholland regarding 283 Boston Post Road, site plan modification. The applicant, Theodore A. Harris, Esquire, is requesting a site plan modification to the previously approved plan for a mixed use development for the above location. The zoning commission approved the construction of two mixed use buildings along with the site plan on July 13th, 2017. During the public hearing, there was an extension, excuse me, extensive discussion regarding the placement and construction of a retaining wall along a northerly property line. The parking lot for the development is behind the buildings on a northerly line, northerly line, excuse me. The single family home abuts the property line. The developer originally proposed an elevated parking lot with a retaining wall along this property line. During construction, the retaining wall was eliminated and the parking area graded to the existing elevation of the property line. Because this condition does not match the approved plan, a site plan modification is necessary to permit the elimination of the wall and a new grading, and the new grading to. It is my understanding the adjoining property owner requested the changes in the site plan that we agree upon, agreeable, excuse me, to the applicant.
Thanks, Terry.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Matt, I do want to let you know that Jason Fazaglia is here. Um, I know Attorney Harris is not and I'm gonna guess that Bill Mulholland wants to talk.
All right, we'll hear from Bill and then we'll hear from Mr. Fazaglia, presuming he wants to say a few words.
I can't hear him.
Yeah, Bill, we can't, we can't hear you.
That's the best I've got.
That's better.
Say it again.
I think you gotta get closer to the microphone, like you lean forward a little bit maybe.
No.
Maybe not.
He's not coming in at all. Nothing.
No, it goes, it goes in and out. It's kinda weird.
Turn it over to Jason.
Jason, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you very well.
You're fine, Jason. Yep. Um, so, so to elaborate a little bit, if you wanted some more detail, it, it coincides with what Ted Harris said. The neighbor had a preference not to look at a retaining wall and it gave us a little bit more flexibility to also plant the trees that we planted. So it was just kind of something that we worked through with the homeowner and we had discussed it in the original site plan, but I, we had left it in there originally just because I don't think we, for lack of better terms, wanted to upset the abog, abog cart and change the grading on the plan until after we had the approval. But with the site conditions, everything seemed to work out without an issue. The neighbor's happy. I'm fine with it and, and that's really the, that's about it.
Okay. Didn't the neighbor originally like the idea of the wall or want the wall? Is that accurate?
No, he didn't want it.
He did not want it?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I'd have to go back and re, okay. So you're saying the, the neighbor never wanted the wall to begin with? That was something that we-
That's what he was adding again.
Yeah. Bill, what's it?
It was a design that Fanner had done. Um, and then, you know, in, in discussion with the neighbor, and I would agree with the neighbor, he, he preferred to look at the trees in grade versus, you know, a more industrial slash commercial retaining wall.
Right. Okay. All right. So this modification is strictly about this wall and so the trees, there were trees that were, so you are planting trees or have you already planted trees? What's there now? And I, I should have done a drive-by and I did not, so maybe just for, for, just, just take a second and just give a description to everybody of what is there now versus what was approved.
Yeah, so basically, only item that changed is the retaining wall.
Okay.
The trees that were proposed, that have been planted are, and installed and living since, uh, early summer, um, so none of them have died, so that, that's okay. Um, yeah, again, it was, it's only, it's only the retaining wall that's been removed.
Okay. Did we specify what kind of trees? What kind of trees did you plant there?
We planted six to eight foot arborvitae's.
Okay.
It might even have been seven to eight foot.
Okay.
But again, you know, that, we, we've been working in conjunction with the neighbor. I mean, he's been fantastic, uh, to, you know, he's been a team player with me as much as I've been trying to, with him and, uh-
Right.
He's been happy and, and-
And there's really just one neighbor who's within such close proximity to your project that's, he, he was, this was a neighbor that came to the meeting way back when, correct? Didn't he come?
Correct. Yes, his name is Harry Ogden. Yes.
What, okay. Let's take comments from the commission unless, Jason, do you have anything else you want to add or it's, it's pretty, pretty simple, right, what you're proposing?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, yes.
Okay. Members of the commission? Does anybody wish to be heard on this modification of this site plan with the elimination of a retaining wall that originally, uh, was in the site plan?
Mr. Donovan, I think, has a question.
Mr. Donovan?
We can't hear you, Terry. This happened last time with you. Type your question in the chat box.
There he is. Yeah, we can't hear him.
I can't hear him.
We can't hear him. Anyone else wish to comment while Terry works on his technical difficulties?
Just like to say, uh, thank you, Jason, for working with the homeowner on this. Well done.
Yeah.
All right, so Terry's question was, are the trees along where we see the, the split rail fence on that, um, site plan? Or is the split rail fence gone? Jason?
That's a question to Jason.
Yeah, the, the split rail fence, the trees are on back of the split rail fence, correct.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
From a staff standpoint, Bill, you've been there, you've been, you know, checking in on this project, uh, just aesthetically, your, your thoughts again, a quick snapshot of what you think about this elimination of the retaining wall?
You can hear me. It's, it, I look at it as a housekeeping issue when you get in construction, try to make adjustments.
Yeah.
I don't have any issues with it.
Right. I mean, I have to support what George said in regard to, you know, the relationship between the developer and the neighbor. I, I think that that's paramount and it's always good to hear that, uh, the neighbor's feelings and wishes and desires were given a, a lot of consideration and there's been a constant conversation about the project and how it's gonna impact the neighbor's property and his view, et cetera. So, um, so I, I agree with George. I, I think that that's a, that's certainly a very positive thing that kind of comes with this modification that, that makes it, uh, makes us look at it more favorably, I think. I say us, it makes me look at it more favorably. I don't know how others feel. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Terry says yes. He's making a motion.
We need somebody to read it though, don't we? Is there, let's let somebody else read the motion.
Let me find the motion, I can read it.
Ann?
Yes, yeah.
Ann's gonna, Ann's gonna read the motion. Oh, she gotta turn the light on. Oh, she's got to turn the light on. The recorder's, the recorder's not going to pick that up.
No, let's have, yeah.
Let's go with Denise. Denise, Denise is going to pinch it. You're in the game, Denise. You're in the batter's box.
Oh, I'm loving it. Request of Theodore A. Harris, Esquire agent for 283 Boston Post Road LLC for a site plan modification for mixed-use commercial space with apartments at 283 Boston Post Road, Patagonia Drive, and 281 Boston Post Road, parentheses, parking, unparentheses, comma, East Lime, Connecticut.
Perfect, Denise. And that motion was verbalized by Denise Markovits.
We get a thumbs up from Terry.
That's right. And do we have a second?
Terry.
Terry's trying to make a second.
Terry is giving it a second with a thumbs up. Any last second discussion, comment? Seeing none? I need to go around, take roll call. I'll start with Terry. Terry? Aye.
Yes.
Bill? Aye. Denise?
Aye.
Aye. Ann?
Aye.
Who says aye? George?
Aye.
Aye. And myself, as chairman, aye. So again, we have a unanimous vote, six-zero-zero. The modification carries. Congratulations, Jason. Makes sense. Thanks for all the communication with the neighbor, and, you know, it, it makes things a lot easier for everybody involved. Thank you again.
Yeah, well, thank you also.
Appreciate it. Have a great night. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the August 13th, 2020 meeting. Take a motion to
I'm going to let Norm come back.
Yeah, we got to let Norm come back.
I'm back.
Thanks, Norm. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at the minutes on the town website? We'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
I can't approve anything.
No? I heard her. She said, I move to approve the minute. And I think she was going to say of August 13th, 2020, right?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Bill Dwyer seconded the motion. All those in favor who were here signify by saying, ah, and we can't do that. We got to go around. I can't help myself. I can't help myself. Mr. Donovan? He approves. Denise Markovits approves. Bill Dwyer approves. Ann approves. Norm?
Yes.
Approves. And I approve, so the minutes stand. Very good. Six-zero-zero. Moving on to old business, there is none. We're rolling right along. New business, any, any business on the floor, if any, by the majority voted the commission? Does anybody have anything they wanted to take up tonight with the commission?
Terry says yes. Hold on. He's got to type it.
I, I also have an item in, in turn.
Okay. All right, so Terry will take Terry's item.
Terry said to take Norm first.
We'll take Norm's item first. Okay, Norm, go ahead.
Next year, it is anticipated, and Paul Formica will back this up, that recreational marijuana is, is going to be, become legal.
Right.
And I would just ask for a couple minutes to talk about that.
All right, shoot, everybody. Anybody have any objection?
I do. I'm, I'm, I object to it.
Do you really?
I object to marijuana, yes.
Well, okay, yeah, but do you object to Norm speaking about it? No. Go ahead, Norm.
I object to it also. And I never, believe it or not, went through the 60s and 70s and never touched the stuff. But anyway, it's coming, most likely, and it's, those towns who allow facilities are going to get a substantial sales tax to the town. Not that we make our decisions about financial items, but it's worth mentioning. I had a thought of treating this similar to how we treated the adult
Entertainment?
Entertainment facilities. We wrote zoning that would put them only in a one particular industrial park.
Right.
If a facility comes, it's going to be, need a lot of parking. It's going to cause a lot of traffic. So we really can't afford more traffic on any of our main roads. So the idea was, my proposal is that we think about, or maybe talk about at the next meeting, writing a regulation that would allow this in an industrial park by special permit. That's
Out of, out of the public view, I think, is what you're getting at.
Out of the public view, and to dissipate traffic, you know, put the traffic in a place to where there's hardly any traffic, and where there's, yeah, out of the public view.
Right.
Yep.
Right. That's an interesting, interesting comments, and I had heard the same about that the legalization of marijuana is definitely coming to a theater near you. It's, it's coming. It's just a matter of when. There was talk a year ago, we'd see it legalized in 2020, and now it's been pushed back to 2021, and it seems more likely that it is going to happen in 2021. But, but I, I understand your thoughts, your feelings, and your intent, Norm. Anyone else?
I think Bill wanted to make Mulholland
And also the angle from a financial perspective, you know, you know, would offset the tax base a little bit to bring in some revenue for the town. I, I had heard, I don't know, I haven't been able to confirm it, but I had heard up in Massachusetts, in those towns that were able to open up facilities, you know, relatively early after the legalization, that it was quite a boon to those particular towns in terms of tax revenue, but that can't be the only consideration, but it's certainly a consideration, I think, you know, for the, for the town, or for any town, for that matter. But I, how do others feel about what Norm has, has, not proposed, well, maybe proposed, he's, he's talking about writing a regulation that would essentially allow such an activity in a, in a designated zone, in an almost, in an almost, these are my words, in an exiled zone. I mean, you know, we're talking about in, in, in an area that's, that's away from the public, at least in a large sense, in a general sense. What are other people's thoughts? I'm curious. George?
My question is, can Bill refresh my memory as to where our industrial zones are?
Great question.
Yes, it can. Behind Stop and Shop, you have one industrial park. You have Colton Road, which is almost in the next town to the west, and that's essentially it. We have very limited industrial area. We have an industrial park at Liberty Way at the west end of town. I will note that I already met with a potential applicant two weeks ago, looking at sites specific and then
We missed the last part of that.
Yeah.
We missed the last part of that, but I think what Bill had said is he met with a potential applicant a couple of weeks ago who had their sites on
A specific
Perhaps a, a specific property, a particular property that happens to be on the industrial park, light industrial park on Colton Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Obviously, probably premature, premature to say much more than that.
It probably is premature to say anything about that, but at the point you're allowing, if it becomes legal, it's not yet, it's like a package store in town. You can tell package stores that they can only go to one industrial area because of traffic and because they are selling an intoxicant? I mean, basically, it's the same thing. I'm not sure, I think we open ourselves up to a lot of problems if we say they can only be here or there. And I don't know how that translates into, you know, like sex shop or anything like that, but, I mean, that's my thought.
Right. Right. We all have different feelings, but I think societally, there still is, to some extent, maybe to a big extent, there's a stigma, there's a different label attached to, I believe there is, I mean, you may disagree, to marijuana versus alcohol. We can argue all day long. I mean, alcohol
We could.
We, we could put statistics up that, that show a lot of damage, the damage that alcohol causes, we know that. But, you know, for the purposes of this conversation, though, I think, you know, what Norm is talking about is, really, at the end of the day, what he's talking about is us staying ahead of an issue, staying ahead of issues, and we've had a history, I think, on this commission, at least so long as I have been here, of making efforts to do that, to sort of stay ahead of the curve, to stay ahead of a new issue that might be coming to town, a new type of business, and, you know, so I, I love the proactive, you know, thought process.
Can I suggest that we
Go ahead, George.
The attorney at this point to see if we can legally do that?
Right. We can't do anything until it's, I mean, it's not legal yet, so we're
But if it were kind of needed.
Yeah, the town attorney would need to be very involved, I would presume, on an issue like this. Is that fair to say, Bill? Mr. Mulholland?
At, at this point, premature, but I have some ideas what we want to do.
I think public sentiment, public comment could play a very significant role, you know, with an issue like this as well. And again, I, I don't know, you know, where the public is going to weigh in on this. Maybe I'm old-fashioned, and, but wherever the public weighs in, then maybe that will guide us to, to some degree, if not to a large degree. Anyone else on, on that issue?
I guess what I'd like to
We know how you feel, Bill.
I guess what I'd like to get is a consensus
Right.
If we can move forward. I'm not the, the type, nor are a lot of people, the type to wait until something happens before you do something. I think there's a lot we can do in advance of the state approving this, so we can be ready to push the button when it does happen.
Right.
To allow whoever this person is to come to this town. In regards to Denise's comment, there is quite a difference. You are talking about a lot of traffic, a lot of parking. If you go to the medical marijuana place in
On 32, you're right.
Well, they are waiting, pre-COVID, waiting in line, a line probably 60 feet long outside the building, and they don't have enough parking, and that's medical stuff. So the anticipation is, I mean, a package store, you got two, two or three people in there at any one time. It's, it's, it is a different animal.
Right.
Why do we have to, do we have to zone stores at all? Like, are we required to because it becomes legal?
No, no.
I hate to see it coming at all, actually.
If we, I know, if you, if you look at it the way we looked at the adult entertainment issue, I'm wondering, and this is a question for an attorney, if somebody came along next year without us doing anything and applied for a retail store of an item that's legal, the question is, could the law force us to permit it in any retail zone?
Another question for an attorney, I would guess.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I said.
Absolutely.
So maybe, Bill, those two questions?
That's probably a good starting point for this discussion is to engage the attorneys, town attorneys, Attorney Demarcus, Attorney O'Connell, either or, and get their legal expertise on, on those two very pointed questions.
That's kind of why I mentioned in the first paper, because of that.
Right. And if we could have some answers to those questions by the next meeting, then we can, you know, we'll be making progress on the issue, which I think is what, you know, I think that's, that's what Norm would like to see, and I think that's fair to at least, let's, let's defer to the attorneys right now and see what, see what direction we should go.
I think that makes a difference.
All right. And move, did Terry have an issue?
I do.
Terry, you got to turn us off on the other one. There we go.
I just did.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I don't know what the problem is with that. But anyway, my, my question is, now that I can't see everybody here, because I don't know how to use this one, but, you know, there's other towns and counties that are, you know, re-looking at their zoning regulations. I actually had a friend contact me, and I asked Jen about this, you know, they were looking at some property up on Most Way Road where they have eight acres, and it's at the point to where, you know, like, she wants to take care of her parents, you know, they're getting older now, they're retired, but they want to have like an in-law detached suite, as you may say. Do you guys all think, does the commission think that maybe it's time that we address this issue? Because it is becoming basically a nationwide issue in terms of, you know, the housing and stuff like that for people, you know?
I'm looking at that right now personally.
Yeah. Because there are, there are other towns, like I know, you know, Lime is one of our neighbors, you know, there's some properties in Lime, I mean, they're totally different than us in terms of graphics and stuff, but there's some houses out there that have, you know, two or three carriage houses on them. So personally, I think it's something that we should look into for our future, you know, because it is something that is going to be happening pretty soon everywhere. So whether if we form a subcommittee to start looking into this, or Mr. Mulholland, you know, comes up with some ideas, whatever it may be, I think it's something that we have to do. And that basically is my question to the commission. Is everyone on board with that? Because within this past year, I've had several people ask me about in-law apartments, because, you know, there are, you know, like students, and there's other people who come and work at Millstone or whatever, who basically just want to rent a room from somebody, and technically they really can't do that, because our current regulations do not allow, you know, like an in-law suite to have like an oven or whatever in it. So just checking in on that. So what is everyone's thoughts on that?
Mr. Mulholland has his hand up.
Yeah. Mr. Mulholland?
Hopefully you can
Okay, what happened?
This is a very complex issue. This, this community, this commission eliminated tourist homes, et cetera, et cetera, because the town had become very transient. We do allow additions to houses now, wanting your in-laws in, or parents, and we all have dealt with that issue. You can put an addition on your house. You can have a toilet in a bedroom, you just can't have a kitchen, so that your parents
Right.
Have to take their meals with the family. You could have an appliance in yours, sitting room area, like a microwave. So we found a way to do that without turning the community into a multifamily type of, more transient type of community, so
Right.
There are a lot of things to look at. I can do a little bit more research and get back to you, and we can discuss this a little further. There are techniques and tools in my toolbox that I do use so that people can do these things. I, for one, had to take care of my parents. I, for one, had to take care of my parents, but I, I get it. If you're fortunate enough to have a move-in and you can do something like that, that's terrific. But I think it's, I'd like to do a little more work in that.
Yeah.
And have a discussion.
Because, because, Bill, I think, you know, Terry here again, I think, you know, what I'm, I'm looking to investigate is the fact of a separate building, not an addition to the building. You know? So can, if property allows it to, say, like, if you have eight to 12 acres, whatever it may be, can an applicant build an exit, excuse me, an additional structure to accommodate such things? I think that's what I'm looking into. You know, obviously, like, in R10, you know, somewhere I am, no way, right? But, you know, an R40, R80, whatever, if you have a residence there to where you could put, like, a caretaker house or a carriage house or whatever, can you do so? And right now, our regulations do not allow that. Correct?
That's, that's correct, and there's a variety of reasons. A variety of things you can do if you do something like that. You know, there's a lot of issues to discuss, but presently not allowed, you're correct.
Right.
Is there a way to where we could rethink this out to go from there? Because now, we're losing taxpayers in the town of East Lime that have to go to other towns.
Right.
And, you know, they're gonna build new property, so we're losing that tax base, and it seems as though, you know, like, without an 830G in their pocket, the family's leaving town, so I think it's something that we seriously need to address, because there are people actually leaving this town, and it's-
I think one of the keys, yeah, I, I think there would have to be language, but again, then it becomes an enforcement issue, so I'm just kind of talking off the cuff. There would have to be language that specified, made it clear that it would have to be an elderly relative, and then, to me, that's a different situation than allowing borders and allowing people to, to stay there that are working at Millstone. I mean, that's a, that's a horse of a different color. I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of that, but I think that the specific family situation that you cite up on Mastaway Road, you know, but again, we, we've gotta have regulations that apply to everybody. That's the, that's the difficult.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that too, but I, I, I still think it's something that we need to look into, because it's been done-
I don't disagree at all. I don't just-
It's being done nationwide.
Baby boomers, we've got an aging population, we gotta have a place to put them. And it's, 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 it's definitely worth taking a close look at. I agree with that. And it's another issue that I think we would consult with our attorneys on as well.
Two years ago, we went through all this, and it turned down.
That's right.
Right, I know. I remember we talked about this. Bill, do you have anything?
Couple years ago isn't today, though, Bill.
No.
First, Kirsten has his hand up.
George, and then Norm.
Okay, my thought, and it's been the thought probably brought up the last time we discussed, is what happens when the elderly parent or whatever passes on, and you got this complete apartment that's available?
Excellent, excellent questions. Excellent. These are all the peripheral questions that go with that, the primary one, which is, and, and the intent, in your-
It sounds to me like the people out on Mastaway-
We gotta take everything into account. Norm wanted to speak.
Just a suggestion. When Bill, when Bill speaks, let's try to mute ourselves. Like, that might improve his volume.
I knew how to do that.
I agree. Mr. Chairman, also, as a note, George, this is nothing personal, but if you're not sitting in our meeting, can an alternate speak on our Zoom meetings? Just a question. Jen?
I think on this part, I can.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because in a normal meeting, wouldn't you do that?
I don't, it's not a public hearing, and you're not-
Yeah, if we were in a normal meeting, if we were at a normal meeting at this stage of the meeting, I would definitely entertain comments from, from an alternate, from the-
Okay.
From the nickel seat, so to speak, yeah, so.
No, I mean, like I say, it's nothing personal. I'm just wondering, you know.
Right, I got you.
No, I think you're okay, Terry. I understand where you were headed with that.
Okay.
But Terry, I think it's a real issue. It is a very real issue facing all of us with our families, and it's, it's something that, it's food for thought. It's, it's, it's an issue that we should broach with the, our town attorneys. It's, it's definitely something we need to think about. Let's turn to our zoning official for the zoning report and try to wrap this up.
Since my mic is so bad, I will pass tonight and catch up with you next time. I will be addressing the microphone issue, so thank you for putting up with that.
Thanks, Bill. I heard most of what you said. It worked out pretty well.
Me too.
Comment from Cicio. I don't think-
Nope, she's not here.
Roseanne is not here. Comments from zoning board liaison to planning. We had Terry on August 4th. You probably already gave a report at the last meeting. There was no meeting, right?
I missed it.
Okay. And then Kim was supposed to go, September 1st. Do we know if there was a meeting on September 1st?
There was a meeting.
There was?
There was a meeting on September 1st.
We'll, we'll have to wait to get that report at the next meeting, hopefully.
Yep.
Comments from chairman? I don't really have anything. I think we, we were able to effectuate another successful Zoom meeting, so congratulations, everybody. I would much prefer meet in person. I'm hoping that we're getting closer to that. I, I feel strongly that we should be meeting in person, but that's my feeling. Everybody has their own feelings about COVID and all the safety precautions. I believe in the safety precautions, but I do want us to meet in person ASAP. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Don't move. Thank you, Ann. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
What about the roll call call?
Get the roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Chairman? Is it too late for my political signs?
What's that?
Is it too late now for the political signs?
The meeting is adjourned. Next meeting.
Turn, turn.
Look at my front lawn, Bill.